Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you. Are we on time, Alda?
Yeah.
Thank you.[12.21][12.21](Laughter). Welcome to October's town meeting. I'd like to welcome some new residents that have moved in since our last town meeting. Mrs. Selma Aronson in apartment 525, Mr. Thomas May and Mrs. Mary Ann O'Brien in apartment 2513, Mrs. Leslie Sherwin in apartment 2207B. So if you see them, I think their pictures are up. If you see them, please welcome them. So to kick us off this morning, which what will be an abbreviated town meeting, as you can see, we're setting up for the Safety Fair in a little bit, so we're going to keep this very brief. So we have, but we have a few things to announce. Maria, would you like to kick us off?
Good morning, friends. I'm Maria Lasala, the Spiritual Care Coordinator, and it is an absolute joy to be with you on this beautiful, beautiful October morning. Have you had a chance to look outside with the sun glistening onto the leaves? It's almost like a stained glass window out there. It's absolutely stunning. And it is also really good to be here in this place with you today. So as you can see from the tables around the CAC this morning, today is Whitney Center's Safety Fair, and all of us will have an opportunity to hear about the ways we can be safe and feel safe. Do you know that there is a difference between being safe and feeling safe? You know, being safe is when we are protected from harm or other non-desirable outcomes. Feeling safe, though, evokes more of a sense of well-being. So this morning, folks from the police and fire departments are here to tell us how they work to keep us and our Hamden residents and neighbors safe from undue harm. These folks often put their own lives at risk, responding to the crises and concerns of the community. They are responsive when worrisome events are happening all around us. They help us be safe, and we are thankful. The Whitney Center Government Relations Committee also has safety in mind, especially when it reaches out to the Hamden political leaders and asks them to consider how best to reduce the speeding along Leader Hill Drive, right? Here, too, we work to be safe. At almost every town meeting, we hear from Rafael Avila, reminding us about internet scams. "Pay attention," Raf insists, so that your personal records are not compromised. Raf helps us be safe. And during the worst of the COVID pandemic, so many team members from Whitney Center arrived, ready to feed us and care for our physical needs, ensuring that we were safe. Feeling safe is knowing that our well-being is in good hands. When we feel safe, we reach a peace of mind and can focus on the present. Sometimes, we get caught up in thoughts about the past and future too much, the what-ifs, the what-ifs. But we know that when we have that peace of mind, we feel strong in both body and mind. We are able to resist too much stress and anxiety. We stay grounded and balanced. Being safe and feeling safe matter. In this after-pandemic time, we are stronger and better for what we have discovered about ourselves and because of how we have cared for one another. I hope that we can learn some things today that will continue to carry us forward, feeling stronger and safer together. Friends, as I do each month, I tell you about the changes in our resident community. Whitney Center resident Dr. Peter Marr passed away on Sunday afternoon, so I invite you to pause for a moment and give thanks for his life lived among us. You know, all around us are reminders of how we, as a community of friends and neighbors, look out for one another. Let's give thanks for the care and the attention that we receive each day. Thank you.[360.31][360.31](Applause).
Thank you, Maria. Okay, so on behalf of the Residence Council, today we're going to have Ms. Merrill Menon. Merrill, where are they? Merrill is going to come up and, I believe, talk about the elections, right?
About the nomination.
Nomination.
Actually, my words are related to the nominating committee more than the Residence Council in general. Good morning. I'm Chair of the Nominating Committee this year, whose members are Debbie Bovilske, Kai Erickson, Mary Alice Frankenberger, and Susan Meredith. And the committee is pleased to announce the list of candidates for the Residence Council. Please note that this list is of the candidates, not the new members, and will be on the bulletin board of the Residence Council after this meeting. At the campaign party on November 14th at 3:00 in the Cultural Arts Center, each of the candidates will give a three-to-four-minute talk. Residents will receive a ballot the next day and will be able to vote for up to six candidates. The nominating committee will accept petitions signed by at least 20 residents nominating those who are willing to serve but were not included on the slate of candidates. These names will be added to the ballot. The Tellers Committee will count the votes, and the members of the new Residence Council will be shared at the Residence Association Annual Meeting on December 12th. Following is the list of candidates in alphabetical order. Joe Blumberg, Steve Gurney, Chris Johnson, Alicia Jones, Evelyn Krevelin, Esther Kristal, Perry Level, Marjorie Prince, Misha Schwartz, John Tully. Congratulations to all of them. Thank you all for your participation in this process. We are indeed fortunate that the Residence Council has been and will continue to be an important voice for residents in productive conversations with the Whitney Center administration. I hope you will all attend on November 14th to listen to the candidates and to enjoy the refreshments after the speeches. Thank you.[510.12][510.12](Applause).
Thank you, Merrill. Okay. I think we have Dan. Dan Zulo, our Maintenance Supervisor, will, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but come on up.[527.22][527.22](Laughter).
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to give a quick update on K4 and the usage of that app for maintenance, housekeeping, IT. We've received quite a few work orders since this has come out, really positive feedback, and I want to tell you, everything's been working very well. So what you're doing is working. We are receiving them, the details and the way that you're, you know, doing the actual work order is working. The one thing that we see is sometimes work orders come in and they have three separate departments for one work order. So you'll have a, put in a work order that I, my toilet's broken, I need my lamp dusted, and I have no Internet. Well, that's three separate departments, and it would come to only one person. So the importance of separating that is it doesn't get to the right people, you know, and it's a lot harder for us to kind of coordinate that within the system. We would have to delete things and recreate and all of that. So if you can please just be mindful of that, make sure you make separate work orders for the separate departments that you need to send in work orders for. Also, the Maintenance Team, we've started making some videos and putting them on Channel 102. They're also on K4. We've also received really positive feedback for that. Please keep watching those. They're meant to be educational and interactive so that we can kind of, you know, help you better understand really how your apartment works and, you know, how to keep it running functional. You know, I'm going to make a few more of those in the coming weeks. We'll do a different one every week. We may repeat some ones depending on the time of season. You know, your thermostat one, we'll probably do a couple times a year. And if you have any feedback on specific things that you'd like to see, please shoot me an email or stop me in the hallway. You know, let's collaborate on that and, you know, see how we can best serve you. Those are the only updates that I had today. Thank you. Yes?
I just wanted to make a comment about the work orders, and part of the reason you're getting work orders for different things is a learning experience. And the IT department, Rafael's department, is organizing additional refresher courses coming up in November, the Tuesdays of November. And if you're confused about these things, or how do you send a work order to IT instead of Maintenance, we can, we'll be covering that in great detail. Also, there are the computer clinics on Monday mornings that you're always welcome to attend. We've been doing an awful lot of K4 stuff to help people use it better. So I wanted to emphasize that, that while you're getting so many is because they don't know how to click down on the right place in order to select IT rather than Maintenance.
Sure, sure. Thank you for that information. That's, that's great, that there's so much interaction with that. As I said, all the departments, we've all talked about how much of an influx we've actually had of those kind of right off the bat, so people are using it. And if you need a refresher, please, please join one of those. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Herb, for making that announcement. I'm just going to add a little bit more detail to it. Raf asked me to mention that we are hosting those four live K4 education events here in the Cultural Arts Center on November 1st, 18th, 15th, and 22nd at 1:00 PM. They're all on Tuesdays, so every Tuesday for the month of November, okay? As Herb said, we're going to do some demonstration of the app, questions and answers, and most importantly, we want feedback on how it's going. So you letting us know, and we can continue to learn together. You know, we call it a learning curve for a reason, right? It takes, it takes time, and this feedback helps us help you, and we all grow together. So thank you very much. An announcement from our philanthropy folks, from Terry. Mark your calendar for philanthropy gathering next Thursday, November 3rd. The program starts at 3:00 PM here in the Cultural Arts Center. Team members will give an update of the many projects we've been able to move forward thanks to donors. Refreshments and Time to Mingle will follow the program. We'll also kick off a fun fall raffle at the event. You'll find this event listed in the K4 app under both Events and Announcements. Okay. So I just want to ask the team if there are any other announcements before I move on? We're good? Okay. So what I have to add this morning is just an update on the, on the stuff we're doing with Meadow Mills across the street. So hopefully by now, you've heard. We try to make the announcement as ubiquitous as possible. We are in the process of finalizing the bonds for the purchase of Meadow Mills. So last Wednesday, not yesterday, a week ago prior, we priced just about $18 million in bonds in the market. The timing wasn't great. Relatively speaking, you know, if we look at the last 10, 15 years, you know, interest rates are within the range of the average, but compared to the recent past, not so good. Nonetheless, we priced the bonds at 7%. We will, we will be closing those bonds. I think two or three institutions subscribed on Wednesday morning, and now we're moving toward closing those bonds on Monday. Once we close the bonds, we will then be able to close the sale, or the purchase, and as of 12:01 AM on Tuesday, November 1st, Whitney Center will be the owner of Meadow Mills. We have been over there talking with the staff, working with the ownership to get the transition moving. As I had mentioned in some of the communication, we will be welcoming all of the direct care, direct service staff as new employees of Whitney Center, and we will work with the management team to look at opportunities there for integrating those positions. Are there any questions about that? We have a couple of minutes. I just want to give an opportunity for, yes, sir?
Is there anything further about traffic on Leader Hill Drive?
Is there anything further about traffic on Leader Hill Drive? I'll repeat the questions if we can't get the mic in there in time. No, nothing further at this, at this time. That's one of the first things we'll take up. We don't have any real clout in terms of our footprint until we actually take ownership, so, yeah. But the town is very much aware, and we'll be having those conversations. Absolutely. And your ideas, keep, keep your ideas coming. Oh, a lot of you submitted names for, you know, potential names for Meadow Mills. For right now, our approach is to stand pat. We don't want to disturb the operations over there, and it's going to take some time to learn how things are going over there, because we won't assume that we, you know, we've got the market corner on knowledge in terms of how to run a community like Meadow Mills. So we want to go and learn, see what's working well, what can use some improvements, and along with that comes the name change. So we're going to hold off for now. It'll, it'll be known as Meadow Mills, working under Whitney Center. So we'll keep the DBA or the Doing Business AS Meadow Mills, Whitney Center ownership sort of on the legal side. But we'll talk more about the name change in the future. And the other thing I'll mention, too, some of you are concerned about the transportation, sort of related to the street traffic. Some of you are concerned about the transportation back and forth. We're working on that, too. As I had mentioned, we did program in two, two enclosed heated golf carts that we'll be using to go back and forth. So once we, once we close the financing, we'll have the funds to actually go forward with some of these things. Okay? Any, any questions? Yes, Joe?
How are you going to determine which of the--
Oh, can you, thanks.
How are we going to determine which residents who are in our memory unit now are going to be transferred over there? Because I understand that they're like at 90% occupancy or something of that nature.
Yeah, I, so, right. So Meadow Mills is currently right around 54 of the, 53, 54 of the 60 rooms occupied, and we have, I think, 10, 10 or so, 10 residents up in our memory support. So clearly, not all of them can go over at once. And we expect that, we expected that. It'll happen over time, you know, and not everyone's going to be ready to move right away. We want to work at the pace of the resident and the family that's comfortable to them so that we can transition. I think once we start, once we take ownership on the first, we're going to work to coordinate some tours and, you know, walkthroughs with the families and residents, and then ultimately all of you, if you so, if you so choose, you know, can, can come through the building and take a look. But we'll work at their pace.
And also, at the last town meeting, I believe you said you work in cooperation with the Town of Hamden as far as the bonds are concerned? Is that correct?
Yeah, so--
So, excuse me, so does that make those bonds tax-free?
Yes. Well done.[1168.23][1168.23](Laughter). Yeah, in order, in order to qualify for the tax exemption here in Connecticut, we have to go through an issuing agency that certifies that tax exemption. So in Connecticut, there's a piece of legislation called the City and Town Development Act that enables municipalities to serve as that agency. So effectively, they're, they are the conduit issuer of the bonds. There's no risk to the town. They, they earn a fee for playing that role, and then the tax exemption gets us, gets us a better rate in the, in the bond market.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So that's all I have. We are about 10 minutes. Are we going to start right, right away, Ken, or do you want to come up and introduce now? Okay, well, thank you very much. That concludes the town meeting for October. Appreciate it.
Good morning, everybody. For those who don't know me, my name's Ken Sandberg. I'm the Vice President of our Lifestyle Services, and I'm really happy to introduce and to bring about the, our Safety Fair for probably the third or fourth time in a row. And I see Phyllis Mevedau here, and Phyllis is the Chair of our Resident Safety Committee. Phyllis, I'd love you to come up and say a few words if you would like to. I don't want to put you on the spot. I didn't see you before. I would have come up to you.[1256.23][1256.23](Laughter). Phyllis never says no, exactly.[1262.54][1262.54](Laughter).
Good morning, good morning.
This is a very exciting event for the Safety Committee here at Whitney Center, and I'm happy to see so many people here, and I know that this year will be as good as last year. And I welcome everyone to take your time, visit a booth, go back to the booth, and really absorb all that we offer, and thank you very much for coming.
Okay?
Yes, sure. Thank you, Phyllis. Just for a bit of history before we jump into the program, probably about four or five years ago, there was a resident that tripped and fell and broke their hip, and so the residents, through the Resident Council, came together and said, you know something? We need to really focus on resident safety. And I bring that up because it's really, this is your community. It's our community together, and everything is really about partnerships. So when we talk about safety, no one should, everybody should feel safe and be safe, but not be alone. And we do this together. We do it out in the community, and shortly we'll have the, the police and the fire department come up and speak, and we do it in here as well, and that's really, really important. And we're always trying to advance, communicate, and get, and get better and better. And so, for instance, this year, there's a few more, there's a few more things on the table, if you will. We have welfare and pest control coming in, because as you remember, we had some bears in the backyard, and they're going to come in and talk a little about wild animals outside. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. We have, we're going to do a little talk on brain health today. That's, that's an addition as well. So what we want to do is constantly get better and better, improve, bring you more information. But safety isn't about one day, and I think that's really the important point here. It's every day. And if you're not feeling safe, if you're not being safe or feeling safe, reach out. Usually, go to your liaison if there, if there's an issue or concern. You can certainly come to any one of the management teams. We have a safety guide that is on the K4 app and under the resources. We can get you a hard copy if you, if you want as well, and you can print it out and keep it handy. There's a lot of good information here. So we really do appreciate you coming here today, and we're going to start with, well, before we start, I just want to make a few thank yous. Kaylee Williamson's not here today. She is working from home today, and she's the one that has really been the staff person that's really been instrumental in really helping us evolve our Safety Fair. You can see all the posters. These were actually made last year, and it was very easy to put the program together again this year because we could replicate that. And I want to thank Yolanda Yancey. Is Yolanda here? No, Yolanda's not here, but Yolanda's on our, on our Staff Safety Committee, and Yolanda's been very, very helpful in making sure that we're executing this morning. Certainly, thank you to the staff that's going to be at the booths and also the, our Resident Safety Committee. We certainly appreciate Phyllis. We have, Mr. Selden is on our Safety Committee. We have Carol Greenbaum. We thank you. We thank Therese Ribert, Carolyn Wilson, Micah Kashkarian. So for those of you, he was on the, our committee, he was like on the very first time we got together, he was on the committee. And we want you to go outside, because there's a thing about infection control and washing your hands and how to wash your hands the right way, though those hands are Mike's. And so, and we videotaped him, and we really do appreciate him. He's going to be with us for a long time washing his hands, and so we do, we do appreciate that. So thank, thank you to all of you. So I think to kick us off, let's start from the outside in for our safety, for our Safety Fair. So I'd like to call up our Police Department Officer Teagues, Lieutenant Ofrillo, and Officer Perez from the Hamden Police Department, and they'll say a few words to you, and they'll take some of your questions as well.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Hi, everyone.
Hello, everybody.
I'm Lieutenant Ofrillo. I'm in charge of the Detective Division at the Hamden Police Department, and I'm the community liaison for the community. This is your unofficial Resident Officer, Stephen Teague. I know many of you know him.
Hi, everybody.[1563.23][1563.23](Applause).
And this is, excuse me, Detective Janice Perez. She's in our Major Crimes Unit.[1572.04][1572.04](Applause). So I always spoke to you guys last year. My intent today is to give you a little bit of update where we are, mainly crime, quality of life in Hamden. I know it's a big concern, and we have some positive things to share, we have some negative things to share. Then I'll give you some tips, and then I'll let Officer Teague speak if he, if he has anything to add. And after, we're going to be here for questions. Your input is needed and wanted, so please let us know your opinions, any concerns you may have. We want to know. We want to jot them down, and we want to work on them. So I'll jump into it in terms of crime. So Treadwell has experienced a little bit of uptick in violent crime, which is pretty unusual for us. What is happening in this area is you have a few actors committing a large amount of violent crime. We have made arrests in all of those cases, arrested almost everybody involved. There's a few outstanding. We've had some serious violent crime over here, but we have cleared it up, and it has seemed to, to be under control now with the arrests and some of the search warrants we did and some of the proactive activities. We did increase during the span of increased violent crime in the area of Treadwell, on the Canal Line, we increased bike patrols, what we call Crime Suppression Units, and we had detectives out here. But really, what made the impact was the intelligence, New Haven Intelligence Unit working with our Detective Bureau, identifying who the actors are and us making proactive steps to make arrests and get them off the street. And we successfully have done that. Actually, Detective Perez has one of the cases, one of the early morning shootings on Treadwell Street. So obviously, that's a huge negative to have any violent crime in the area, but we did make arrests, and we have seen it subside.[1705.87][1705.87](Phone ringing). Excuse me, I'm sorry. So the concerns last year of this time and maybe a few months after were our robberies and our purse snatching, especially in the shopping districts. That has pretty much disappeared for now. We do come on a timeframe around the holidays, November, December, where we do have an uptick in those type of crimes. Elderly populations are targeted for purse snatchings and street robberies. That's no mystery to us. We will increase our Crime Suppression Units. The patrol units will be on alert, but the reason those crimes stopped were based on arrests as well. We had a group of about 10 juveniles stealing cars and going around doing robberies and purse snatchings, and they're all incarcerated at this point. Doesn't mean that people aren't going to step up and, you know, follow suit, but right now, we're not seeing an uptick in that. That's under control, but we have to be guarded up. You know, we can't say, all right, you know, those people are arrested, these crimes aren't going to happen again. There's potential for that to happen, and we need to, you know, be aware. We'll do our part. We'll have our units out there. We'll be looking for these people. We'll be tracking intelligence and see who's doing what in other towns. Our residents, our citizens have to be alert and aware. Probably our biggest issue in terms of quality of life in Hamden-- Probably our biggest issue in terms of quality of life in Hamden is our stolen cars. We're averaging about 350 stolen cars a year. Probably about one a day. Most of them are being taken with the keys. So people leaving their keys in their car, or at gas stations. So really high hotspots for stolen cars right now are gas stations along the Dixville Corridor. So be very alert when you're pumping your gas at a gas station, when you're going into stores. See your car's locked, make sure you're aware of your surroundings. If you pull in and you're not comfortable with something there, leave, go to another gas station. It's, it's not worth risking it and trying to, to get your gas quickly, because I'm telling you, these criminals are very quick, very savvy. They're going to get one over on you. They're going to go in your passenger door, take your purse. They're going to hop in your car when you're not aware, when you're pumping your gas. They don't care. So be very alert when you're at a gas station, convenience store. That's where we're seeing a lot of stolen cars. What else we have? Okay, so just some tips. Just, you know, crime prevention tips. I'm sure most of you are aware of these already, but just, it's time of year where you should reinforce it. When you're walking, on a canal line or in the neighborhood, make sure you plan your route in advance. You know where you're going, you know that you're walking in a well-lit area. You know that there's, either you have your cellphone with you, or there's ways to call for help if you need help. We prefer that you walk with a companion. I know that's not always available. It's not something you always want to do, but it is the safest way. If you're going to go, you know, walking for exercise, you're going to walk because you're going to go to the store, we prefer that you walk with somebody, and that you have your cellphone, and you have a way to contact us if you need us. Have your keys readily available to you when you're approaching your car, or you're coming home. You should make easy access to your vehicle, and you lock the door. We're really pushing that at the gas stations, especially when people are coming out of convenience stores or going from pumping their gas, that get in your car quickly. You know, don't, don't dilly-dally, don't mingle around your car. Get in your car and lock the doors. Safeguard yourself. In terms of purses, I'm not going to tell you to not carry purses. I, I think it's a necessary thing that you should be doing. I mean, you've got to keep your cellphone with you, you've got to keep your, your wallet, you have other things that you need. But when you carry purses, don't make them, don't dangle them, hold them close to your bodies. Don't make it overly, you know, easy for somebody to come by and grab it. Don't leave them in shopping carriages when you're in the stores. We get a lot of that, or you're distracted to shopping for your soup on the shelf, and somebody helps themselves to your purse or the contents of it. So if you, you have your purse in the stores, don't leave it on top of the carriage, put it on your purse, and keep it close to you. When you're making purchases, try not to use cash if you don't have to. And if you do use cash, don't bring out large sums of cash, don't make it known to everybody around you. But we prefer that you use a debit card or credit card, it would be the easiest way to not make yourself known. The criminals know that, you know, if, if they steal your purse, they're stealing a bunch of credit cards. Yeah, they might get a transaction or two before their credit cards are shut off, but they're going to be on camera, there's going to be a transaction of that, we can track their routes, they're well aware of that. Cash, we're not tracking anything, and they know that. So if they see not a cash in somebody's pocket or in their hand, it makes you a, a potential target. Like I said, 12% of the crimes against the elderly are purse snatchings and street robberies. So let's do our best to safeguard ourselves, be aware of that stat. The other crimes are, you know, fraud, abuse, and domestic violence. But 12% robberies against elderly is significant, and we can do better. When you're driving around town, in your car, keep your doors locked, in every town, not just Hamden. These criminals are readily mobile. Most of them are in stolen cars, a lot of them are juveniles. Hamden experiences the same crime trends that New Haven would, and North Haven, and Wallingford. So don't feel like you're safe because you're across a town line or a city line. These criminals are everywhere. They're mobile, they're in cars, they're not neighborhood-based. So safeguard yourself everywhere, keep your car locked. Plan your route just as if you were, you're walking. We don't want you getting lost, being stranded in a neighborhood or a place you don't know. Make sure you kind of have an idea where you're going, what routes you're traveling. If possible, let somebody know where you're going and what routes you're traveling. And stay in well-lit areas, even in your car. Keep your valuables in your trunk, if you have to keep them in your car. Include your, you're going Christmas shopping, you know, whatever packages you may have. If they're in your trunk and they're out of sight, locked, it's better, because nobody could see it, nobody sees through your windows, nobody's smashing your windows to take whatever you have, or to guess what you have. They see a bag full of stuff, they might take a shot at it, and let, let me break that window, see what I can get. So keep them in your trunk if you can. And for panhandlers, we prefer that you don't engage with panhandlers, in traffic especially. Don't be rolling your window down, making any donations. And if you want to help, do it out of traffic, and do it by gift card, if that's something you want to do, or make a donation on, online or something like that to one of the nonprofit agencies that does support the homeless. Probably not a good idea to, to be giving cash ever to anybody. But if you feel like that's something you want to do, I would suggest you do it for restaurant gift cards, Stop &amp; Shop gift card, something like that, as opposed to handing cash out to anybody. Pretty much that's all I have to share today. I don't know if Officer Teague has anything to say. But thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephen Teague. I'm actually the liaison over the Whitney Center. I'm going to be very brief, I just want to thank Mr. Sandberg. He works daily with his support staff on making this, this place a safe space. We have monthly Zoom meetings, where we're trying to come up with new ideas, way to make it safer, so. And we collaborate with different people from different associations to make that better. So I just want to thank him, thank you guys for letting me be a part of it, and let's make this a safer place. All right?
So I get a couple of quick questions that I think from moving, moving things forward might be beneficial. My understanding, there was some legislation that actually helped support the Police Department in terms of the juveniles. Is there, was there a couple of things that happened in the legislation that supported, that supported your work? Oh, sure, okay, thank you.
There are a few things in the work, and a few things that have occurred. Mainly what they deal with is the retention of juveniles that commit serious juvenile crimes. So years ago, the Police Department used to be able to make what's called a Serious Juvenile Crimes Arrest, or SJO. And we could detain these juveniles based on that arrest and bring them straight to detention. Some, there's been some changes in the law, which has delayed detention of some of these juveniles, that some of the crimes have changed that would be considered an SJO. And they, they made it harder for us to really detain juveniles. So now they're, they're starting, the legislators are starting to backtrack on that. They're starting to change some of the timeframes, and some of the crimes that we can arrest juveniles for, and bring them for detention. The judges have been much more liberal in signing detention orders. They know that a lot of our crime is being committed by juveniles and a few juveniles, and the best way to stop these crimes from occurring are sometimes to keep these juveniles that are creating some very serious problems in our communities incarcerated for a time being. So they are working with us. The judges and prosecutors are well aware of the issues, and legislators are starting to reform some of those, those acts. So we are definitely seeing some progress. Yeah, so catalytic converters continue to be a big problem. My way to work this morning, I, I heard two or three calls come in, catalytic converter thefts. They're, we're out there, we're trying, trying to find it, they're a difficult crime to detect, they're quick, it's, they pull up, they crawl under a car, it's hard for officers to see sometimes what's going on. They're literally under the car with a sawzall. So unless you get them coming and going, it's, it's difficult. We've been working with the scrap yards to either give us notice when people do turn these in, or to not accept them. They have been cooperating, not all of them do, because obviously, this, these thefts are still occurring, and they're occurring because there's value in the catalytic converters. The best way to safeguard your car from that is to try to park in a well-lit area, populated area, area that could be seen, area that we can patrol, and officer could see, or security could see, or it's under surveillance. Don't park in a dimly lit area, or area that could offer some, you know, bush cover, or any type of concealment for, for some of these people. But is there any other things that you have questions?
No, I know there's some legislations that catalytic converters do, to prevent the acceptance.
Yeah, I, I read a little bit of that, I think it's mainly the exception of the scrap yards. About how, how many they can accept, and from who. It's outside of our purview.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And they're going to be staying, oh, Steve, you want to come back up?
Yeah, I'm going to be staying over, so if anyone has any questions, you guys can refer to me, okay?
Okay. I want to call up Jackie Burneri. I hope, I'm not sure if I pronounced your last name correctly, but Jackie works with the, the police and the community together. So if you want to maybe explain a little bit about your role and what you do?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jackie Byrne. Like fire. I am the facilitator for the organization called Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships. We've been in existence for about two years now. We are the only organization like ours in the state of Connecticut. And what we do is, our motto is build the bridge between the community and the police. Now, every single one of you look exceptionally comfortable, speaking with Lieutenant Anofrio, and Teague, who is an amazing officer, and Janice, who is part of our Strengthening Police and Community Partnership Council. But what we do is help people who might not be comfortable calling the police. We help with groups of people, such as senior citizens, that have a united voice, that we can come together in a forum like this, gather your thoughts or concerns. We work through those, create some potential solutions, and present them to the Police Department, the Mayor's Office. They may get implemented, they may not, but that's what we're here to do. We act as an advisory board for our police and for our mayor. And we do it so that we can represent the entire community. So I, I know y'all have all been asking questions already and getting your questions answered, but I do want you to know that we have a Facebook page, we have an email address. I get numerous emails and, and comments on our Facebook page routinely of people saying, I didn't really want to call the cops about this, but... So I want y'all to know that that's what we're here to do. So look us up, it's hamdenspcp@gmail.com, and we do have a social media page, and it is Hamden Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Council. We also routinely hold community forums, especially when there's major issues, like when we were having so many carjackings and robberies at the shopping plaza. So we facilitated those conversations with the community and the police and the Mayor's Office, and got people's voices heard. And because we did that, we were able to get better lighting, better security, and more police presence in the plaza and the shopping areas. So we are working for you, we're trying to do the best we absolutely can, our officers are doing the best that they absolutely can. If you have very, very serious concerns, and you're uncomfortable reaching out to the police or the Mayor's Office, you can call me, because I am not afraid. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. So before I leave this, I want you to go over and ask Officer Teague why he was on TV a month or two ago. There was, he was spotlighted. So I'm not going to tell you what, what he was spotlighted for, so that will have you go over there and ask him why he was spotlighted. So, for a very good reason. I'd like to call up Jeff Rapisi, Rapisi from Walthing. And this is new this year, again, we had a black bear in our backyard, we have raccoon, raccoons, we have bobcats. And so Jeff is going to speak to us a little bit about keeping safe when we see animals in our backyard.
Yeah, I just really go by Jeff, because it's kind of the easiest way to call me, is to call me Jeff. Thanks for, you know, letting me come and talk to you for a few minutes today about wildlife. I'm going to try to condense this into a short little discussion, because wildlife can literally take me three hours to talk about. So one of the things I try to tell people, or when I'm giving lectures like this, is if I go too fast, or if someone has a question, please stop. I'm Portuguese, and I'm from Massachusetts, so my hands are going to go like crazy, and I'm probably going to talk really fast, it's just my nature. And at 58 years old, I'm probably not going to change. Okay? So let's talk a little bit about some wildlife problems that people have. Usually, it usually starts with urban development, okay? We live in their territory. We're encroaching on them, they are not encroaching on us, okay? So when I see populations start to move into residential neighborhoods, communities, there's usually some kind of urban development going around in their territory. Now, it could be five, 10 miles from here, I'm not saying it's in your backyard, but it's forcing them this way. What they also look for is the same things we need, food, shelter, and water, okay? That's the basic things that all mammals on this planet need. We really can't change their habitat, as far as where they live. It's hard sometimes to deal with a water source. So I always tell people, focus on a food source, okay? That's why they're coming close, they need to find some kind of food source. So everything I'm going to tell you is the conversations I have with my wife, and after 20 years, she still doesn't listen to me, but I still have these conversations anyway, okay? She loves bird feeders, okay? I think the first year I bought my house, it was a bird sanctuary. Which led to raccoons, foxes, feral cats, and I think a couple raccoons, which became my problem. Not that she didn't cause the problem, it was my problem now. But I couldn't touch her bird feeders. Problem is, bird feeders are great, okay? My wife loves them, she likes the birds, the hummingbird, she buys plants that attract birds, and so on and so forth. Like I said, before I go any further, I do love my wife, okay? Before I make fun of her, I really do love her after 20 years, she's put up with me, so I do love my wife. Problem is, squirrels will come to the bird feeders, they'll only eat half, they're dropping all these seeds. Okay? And it kind of messes up your backyard. Well, what happens is, mice and rats also love seeds. So then you've got another population of mice coming in, rats coming in. There are predators for them as well, okay? You'll have predatory birds, you'll have raccoons, and then raccoons start coming in your yard. And then, in my particular area where I live, I have coyotes and, yeah, and foxes. And I'll actually have, I actually had a fox walk through my backyard two years ago. And then my wife loves feeding feral cats, because she feels bad for them, because they're outside. So I'm like, let's just draw more animals to my house, okay? That's really going to solve my problem. So I keep telling her, cut back on the food source, take in the bird feeders, quit replacing them every 30 days. She gets a great deal out of them at OSHA State Job Lot, by the way, because that's where she's always at. But she's always replacing the bird feeders, she's always feeding the feral cats. And in the food chain, the bigger the animal, they're coming down to feed on everything else. They're feeding on the raccoons. You can hear the coyotes going after the foxes and the feral cats. So it can explode into animals coming into your area. So I tell people is, watch your trash, make sure it's covered, I'm not sure how the dumpster areas are here, but if they're well secured, cut back on the bird feeders, especially this time of the year, okay? During the summertime, there's a lot of other nutrients that the animals can go after into the woods and so on and so forth. But as fall comes, and it was coming into winter, the food supply is a lot less, okay? Bears, foxes, coyotes, bobcats have a tremendous sense of smell, way better than, no offense from the police, way better than a police dog. Okay? Do love the police, but these animals can smell better than a police dog. But we don't have bomb sniffing bears, so we'll go with the police dogs. Okay? So that's why when you see all these videos of animals coming into people's yards, or I think I saw one, I used to have one, where it broke into someone's car and got into the glove box, and it busted down someone's front door, they can smell the food that's inside, okay? And that's what they're going for. So I always tell people, food sources is the best thing you can alter to stop or, not really stop, you can't 100% stop them, okay? I never say that the minute you take on a bird feeder, you'll never see another wildlife critter in your backyard, okay? I try to get people to a 90%, okay? I'm going to have a 10% range where everything you did was correct, but 10% of the time, something is going to come into your backyard. That's just nature in general. But if we cut down on the food source, alter the behavior of what we're doing, then it, it doesn't really bring them into your property and won't you... doesn't really bring them into your property anymore, you're taking care of the mice, the rats, the raccoons, the smaller animals that they prey on, especially bobcats, the smaller animals that they prey on, if they're not there, their food source is gone. So if you start eliminating the very basic food source, the bears and coyotes and the foxes, they don't have that food source to go after near your property, okay? Now, I usually open this up to questions because like I said, wildlife can take me three hours, and I'm a bug guy, okay? We do the pest services here, so I usually get a lot of bug questions too. So this doesn't have to be limited to wildlife, you know, I understand you guys had some bear sightings back there, but realize that most bear sightings are just sightings, okay? A lot of animals do not attack, okay? Under certain circumstances, animals will attack when they feel threatened and you walk up on them and startle them, they will feel threatened, or if they're in a mating season, okay? If you have a female bear who's carrying, she's going to be very protective. If you have a male bear in mating season, because guys try to be tough at once in a while, and they're looking for females, they'll be a little aggressive during that time period as well, okay? But under normal circumstances, most animals will not attack, okay? So there hasn't been a lot of bear attacks. I know there was one about a young kid and I understand that, but most of the bear sightings, coyote sightings that are on my area, some of the bobcat sightings usually don't result in an attack, okay? But just wanted to lay that out to you because I don't want people thinking every time you see a bear, it's going to attack. It will not.
Jeff, so if a resident comes across a wildlife in their backyard, they're walking, they're walking out, what should they, what should they do?
Well, a lot of the things I suggest is actually what the police department said, okay? It's actually walk in pairs, so you have someone with you, okay? You can have a sound device on you if you want, some people feel comfortable with them, some people don't. My wife takes it when we go hiking, okay? I don't. Make sure you're in a well-lit area, make sure you tell people where you're going and how long you're going to be gone for, okay? If you tell your neighbor or friend that you're going to be gone for, let's say, two hours and four hours go by, somebody might want to, you know, just check in on you, see how things are going. Of course, always carry a fully charged cellphone, okay? Don't go for a walk with 10 tons of groceries, okay? I mean, you want to take some snacks and I get that, and some water and so on and so forth, but some people tend to overpack. Again, love my wife, but I don't need a whole backpack full of roller bars on a 10-minute hike, okay? So just be mindful of that. And like I said, the best thing is a well-lit, well-visible area, okay? You don't want to get into a lot of blind spots because that's when you kind of can walk up onto an animal and there's not much distance between you, okay? Like the gentleman in the back of the room, if I'm here and I see the bear there, I have plenty of time where I can leave and the bear will not chase me. But if I go to you right around the corner, we're face to face. So make sure that you can really see around corners. And usually I always tell people, the buddy system is the best for many other reasons, not just wildlife, for safety reasons as well, but it does help with the wildlife.
So don't approach, walk away.
Yeah, bears can be cute, I know raccoons can be cute and squirrels and everything else, okay? Yeah, cute from a distance, as I always say, okay? Take a picture, it's worth a thousand words.
Can you stay around for a few minutes?
Sure can.
And answer questions over there?
Yep.
Because we got, we want to get everybody up and around, so if you can stay around, if you can stay around for a few minutes. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. So the fire marshal was going to come that clearly got detained. I'm just going to say a couple of words about fire safety because I think this is really, really important. This building, and Dan, I'm more than happy for you to come up too and support me on this, but you, both the north and south building are very, very safe buildings, they're all sprinklered. And that's, you have to know that. So when you hear the alarm go, if you hear an alarm go off, what we do is we call, we call it stay in place. Don't start seeking out, oh, where's the smoke? Don't start walking around, just stay put, because that's what everybody asks, where should I go if I hear the alarm? Stay put. That's probably the best advice that I can give you right now, is to stay put. But again, this, this building is very well-built, sprinklered, safe. If there's a smoke in your apartment, for instance, if you're cooking something and the alarm goes off in your apartment, don't open the door outside. Call somebody, and Dan can talk a little bit more about that. Dan, why don't you come on up actually, if you don't, if you don't mind? Because what happens is, is your apartment is alarmed and so we do get that information, but then if you open up into the corridor, it's a different alarm system. So Dan, why don't you come up and say a few words?
So as Ken said, everything is, there's sprinklers all throughout this building. They are all checked pretty much on a monthly basis by different vendors that we use. If there's ever an issue, they fix it on the spot. I've been here five years, I've never known of an issue, you know, it just, it all is maintained very well. As he said, if there is, the majority of fire threat that we see at Whitney Center is somebody burning toast or somebody burning bacon and all that thick smoke, you know, our, our rooms are designed to be very sensitive to smoke for obvious reasons, because there's so many people here. Keep your front door shut. Any alarm that goes off, we all have radios, we get notified right away, somebody's heading towards your room. Any of you who've had this situation, you know, we, we enter, you'll always see us kind of shut the door behind us, our first thing is we're going to open windows and then we're going to try to bring in fans. We want to contain the smoke to just your apartment. If the smoke comes outside, now it's a chain reaction and it starts setting all different heads off, which just sets the whole building into chaos. You know, we want to avoid that, especially if it's not a legitimate threat and it was just some, you know, burnt toast or something like that. So, you know, we, we do check all of our, every floor has fire extinguishers in certain amount of feet, everything's to code here. Ed on the maintenance team checks the fire extinguishers every single month, make sure that they're charged, that they're ready for use. You know, we, we take that threat very seriously here and, and we're always, you know, I'm, I'm proud to say we're pretty much very on the ball with that. We have good partnership with the fire department. Their, their timeframe of when there is a legitimate threat, they're here very fast. By the time I walk to kind of go meet them, somebody's pulling in, you know, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too concerned about that.
Thank you, Dan. So it's 11:30 now, we have people stationed all, all around the room here, different, different tables. So it's time to let the, let the party, oh, yeah, Mrs. Greenbaum.
I'd just like to add one thing if you may.
Oh, hold on one second.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to add one thing if I may. Over there by one of the tables down below, because I didn't know where Ken might want me to put it, is what we're going to call a cane holder. You've seen them all over.
It's back there.
They were originally bought for the purpose, thank you. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
Okay. The broken hip that occurred, occurred because that person tripped over a cane, if I'm not mistaken, they're in the audience, they can speak for themselves. They tripped over a cane that was lying on the floor at the commons, if I'm not mistaken. And, and that's a needless accident. So what we ask you to do is to use the cane holders, and they actually can be put in an aisle when you enter if you can, but whatever you, we even used to have coils that wrapped around and you could attach them to the side. Please do not leave your canes anywhere or put them down that anybody can trip over them. That is a major cause, cause of accidents, and we just didn't add it to the list this time to put down. But this is what I want to show you, there is a place, not on the back of your chair, not on the arm of your chair, and not where anybody behind you can trip. Thank you for letting me go on and on and on.